Hello, hello, hello. Hi, everyone. It's seven o'clock and as usual, we still have a few stragglers getting through the door. And because of the added burdens of checking in this time, we'll take a few more minutes if there is no objection. Hearing none, we'll take a few more minutes. Thank you.
Which is kind of what Jeff has to do too.
Isn't that right?
Mr. Moderator, quick question. Article one, because it's a new one, then I will make a motion to dispense with the reading.
And I was just briefly going to take a sentence to say what happened.
But I have to read Article, we have to read, still Article two.
No.
For the motion.
No, no, no.
Regardless, what's your ask for total?
This is, we apply for all.
No, I need the Tom.
Article two.
But I, oh, I thought, so I'm reading.
No, that's Tom. There's only, we've got to start everybody at one.
We're going to do it after Article one, though, it's not really Article one.
No, no.
And then, so there's no need to read that before.
Well, it is, you're right, because our next one is the dispensing of the article.
No, see, Article one is going to be read with some tires and characters. So John's going to read the dispensing of three after. Maybe Tom will just read Article two.
Which is.
I'll give him.
Three thirty-three.
You got it.
I'll, I'll.
Perfect. And then, yeah. So after I read and we vote, then I will read, the motion, just, I vote the Tom, hope to dispense with the reading.
Yep.
And then Tom will read the article.
Article two.
Yeah.
And then, the reading of all the reading articles will give us specific.
Exactly. All right, two more minutes and then we'll begin. Mike Richardson keeps tapping his watch and looking at me.
Well, you're well supplied there, I see.
Yeah, yeah.
As Rodney points out, that is not a beer.
No, I know.
Oh, my gosh, it's crazy. A friend of mine is having a lung surgery. It was supposed to happen today. They postponed it because the surgeon has COVID.
Good evening, everyone. It's seven minutes after seven o'clock. There are no Boston sports teams playing tonight, so we don't have to rush to get out. Although, as always, I encourage everybody to act as swiftly as they can to get their thoughtful messages across. Welcome to Town Meeting, the iconic New England forum where we, the people, engage, discuss, and decide on what matters to our beloved town. As you know, tonight, we begin a new approach to voting at Town Meeting. But before we get to that and how it works, a few things. First of all, I'm happy to introduce Brianna Johnson, a Mashpee High School 10th grader. So if you are able, please stand as Brianna sings our national anthem and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gay proved through the night That our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
There's a flag here and one in the rafters. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. As many of you know, many board and committee meetings in Mashpee begin with a moment of silence. We do not typically do that at Town Meetings. However, tonight, and considering the magnitude of circumstances in Israel and Gaza, plus the Ukraine conflict, please take a few moments of silence for any personal purpose that you deem appropriate. Thank you. We still have some folks coming in, but we will press on. I have some introductory comments here. A few housekeeping matters. If you are a Mashpee voter, you have in your possession a blue and white clicker. Much like this one. You'll see that it has two options, a button for yes, a button for no. Many towns across the state and across the Cape have moved to electronic voting. Why? Well, we made this change from the traditional colored index cards for several reasons. First, it's accurate. It's also quicker than conveying hand count tallies with tellers. It's secure. There's no connection to the Internet or the cloud. And most importantly, it's private. No one sees how you voted, just like when we go to the polls. So before we start the meeting today, how about a practice round or two? When I say "vote now," which will be the operative term, you have 20 seconds to make your selection. Within that 20 seconds, you can even change your vote just by pressing the other button. But just know that the last button you push when the 20-second clock runs out is the one that counts. If you wish to abstain from a vote for any reason, simply do not press any button. Simple enough? Ready for a sample question? Stupid as this one is. Will the Patriots make it to the playoffs this year? Yes for yes, no for no. Vote now. I'll get the hang of it. Probably does not come as a surprise to Mac Jones either. How about another? Let's pretend this one is a motion. I move that retail stores not be permitted to promote Christmas shopping until after Halloween. If you agree, press yes. If no, no. Vote now. Three eighty-four to seventy-six. Favor that motion. I'm honored. Thank you. So as you can see, the tally, the totals show while the vote is being taken. And then the yes or no final response is presented as soon as the total shows. It's hard to read from a distance, but the colored bar across the top turns green, as it is now if the motion passed. And you'll be happy to know that even in the event of a two-thirds or other quantum vote, the system will calculate the math and show whether or not the two-thirds threshold was met. Another benefit of electronic voting. You may have noticed too that some folks here tonight still have a colored card. These are issued by the town clerk to Mashpee property owners and taxpayers who are not registered voters in our town. They have the right to speak at Town Meeting when recognized. The card is so that you and the moderator know their status. Speakers who are voters may be asked to hold up and display their blue and white clicker for verification, or better yet, just wear the landed around your neck. Can I see a show of hands of anybody here that has one of those colored cards? Can I see the card? Okay, thank you. Anybody that has neither a card nor a clicker can neither speak nor vote. When you leave tonight, by the way, exit through the main doors and make certain that your clicker is collected and turned in. When you leave tonight, by the way, exit through the main doors and make certain that your clicker is collected and turned in. What is known about each of the numbered clickers is who it is assigned to. If you forget to turn yours in, you can later expect to be contacted by the clicker police. And you do not want to be in that position. All right, one final note. You may have wondered if the moderator votes at Town Meeting. As a registered Mashpee voter, he or she can, but I don't. Even if my vote would break a tie, which is allowed, or can make the critical one-vote difference in a two-thirds majority vote. I do not see the moderator, who strives to be impartial, as the arbiter of voting outcomes. And that's the reason I don't vote, for your reassurance. Okay. Everyone comfortable? Can we proceed with the business at hand? Thank you. I call your attention to the partial listing of Town Meeting rules at the back of the blue books. We encourage questions and respectful discussion. We also ask that speakers get to the point and make the points succinctly. We encourage the four Cs that you might have seen displayed earlier on the screen. Be concise, civil, constructed, constructive, and courteous. So here we go. Greetings. Town constables have been directed to notify and summon inhabitants of the town of Mashpee who are qualified to vote in the elections to meet at the Mashpee High School Monday, the sixteenth of October, 2023, at 7:00 PM for the following purposes: to act on the articles contained in the warrant. Now, before we go on, you may be aware that Article One was revised by the Select Board at a special public meeting last Thursday. Hard copies of the substitute article should have been provided to you as you entered the hall. If you did not get one, copies may still be available, or perhaps someone near you can share. Customarily, we make a motion, which we will after Article One, to dispense with the reading of the warrant. But since this is new, as of last Thursday, Select Chair John Cotton will read the revised Article One at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $7,500,000 for the planning and design of wastewater collection, treatment, and affluent recharge initiatives in the town of Mashpee, and all costs and expenses incidental and related thereto, including costs relating to the acquisition of necessary easements and other interests in real property, and to meet the appropriation that the sum of $3 million be transferred from revenue available for appropriation free cash, and the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, be authorized to borrow the amount of $4,500,000 under Mass. General Law Chapter Forty-Four, Section Seven, and/or Eight, or any other enabling authority, and to issue such bonds or notes as may be necessary for such purpose, provided, however, that the debt authorization shall be contingent upon passage of a Proposition Two and a Half, so-called Debt Exclusion ballot question, exempting from the provisions of Said Proposition Two and a Half the amounts required to pay the principal and interest on bonds, notes, or certificates of indebtedness issued for this purpose pursuant to General Law's Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Twenty-One C.
Is there a second? What is the Select Board's recommendation on this article?
I did, uh, Board of Select, uh, Select Board recommended five to zero.
Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of Article One by a vote of seven-zero.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article One? And again, if everyone that wants to speak gives their name and address and has their clicker visible, that would be great.
Dennis Belzerini, one-seventy-six, whip a real circle. Okay, I didn't hear anything about Phase Two when John read this article. Is this money going to Phase Two? And if so, are any of this money going to go to Phase One? And if so, how much is going to go to Phase Two and Phase One? And my other question, since we're on Article One, how much of Phase One is finished and how much is left to do? And I want people to understand, we're going to be asking for a lot more money, even just to finish Phase One. Because I don't understand how much of it that's done. And then, this has a sunset clause on it. This Proposition Two and a Half override right now. After the debt is paid off, it goes away, right? Or it goes to general fund? Okay, those are three questions, I hope somebody can answer them. And, oh, what were they? How much more money?
Well, can we just hold it to three questions so we don't lose track of them?
Okay.
Thank you.
Dennis, I'll start it off, but I think it was more than three questions, actually.
Well, they're all generally the same, though.
So the 7.5 million is actually for design and engineering of the next phase. So as far as status of where we are in Phase One, you know, that's, I don't know if someone has an update?
Well, I think that's very important.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Town Manager.
I do have the engineers in the back of the room. If the moderator and the audience would be okay with them speaking. But the short answer is, it finishes Phase One and it continues to Phase Two. But this is just design and engineering. If you pass it tonight, then I'll be revisiting you in May.
For more money, for another?
It's not going to be less money.
I'd like to know the price to finish Phase One. That'd be nice for the people to know, too. So we're not, every Town Meeting, we're getting, oh, we need another seven million, another eight million. I'd like to know upfront so I can think about it.
Anybody else?
And if I could just add, Mr. Moderator, there is a map out there with all of the streets. And it's a nice color-coded map for everybody to see if you really want to check out exactly the location. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Sky Wires at eighty-four Kauga Avenue. I just need someone to refresh my memory from six months ago.
Could we have your name and address, please?
Yeah, eighty-four Kauga Avenue, Skyler Wires. Okay, so we were here, what, five or six months ago, the last Town Meeting? I just need someone to refresh my memory as to the two-and-a-half override. Wasn't, didn't we already override it to the effect that it was totaled at 20 million? And I think eight million was for the same situation? Or am I mistaken? Maybe I'm the only one who forgot about it.
I don't know the exact. You were referring to Phase One, I'm assuming?
Well, six months ago, we went, we had another two-and-a-half, Proposition Two-and-a-half override. It was a total of 20 million dollars. It was split up, it was split up between twelve and eight. And if I remember, I wish I had kept the book. I'm wondering, where's that money? What happened with the eight million or twelve million that we already overrode two-and-a-half for this purpose?
Right, so you're referring to money that was used for Phase One?
Yes, sir. I'm referring specifically, six months ago, the last Town Meeting.
So you're referring to construction costs for Phase One?
Yeah, I don't know what it was for, sir, maybe so.
So this is for design and engineering for, to begin Phase Two, which is actually going to be part, going to connect to Phase One?
Okay, so I guess what I'm saying overall is, so we've already spent the eight or the twelve. I wish I had remembered what it was. Is that already spent and gone from six months ago?
It's, yes, well, it's, it's in progress.
Okay. Okay, well, yeah, eventually, I mean, everybody, obviously, the voters here, we live here. You know, there's either three ways you live here. You pay rent, you have a mortgage, or you don't have a mortgage. Oh, yes. Okay, Article Ten, I guess it was. I'm not seeing the numbers here. But the gentleman before me was trying to get a number. Where are we going with this? Is it going to be 100 million, 200 million? It's just, we're kind of going, like, every six months, period, we're coming in with another two-and-a-half Proposition Override. So it's going to affect everybody who pays, who lives here in this town, regardless of what, how you live here, whether you pay rent, or you have a mortgage, or you don't have a mortgage. So, you know, I grew up in Newton. I mean, the place is insanely overpriced, and the taxes are to the moon. So I'm just wondering, are we going in the same direction?
I, we're taking it step by step? Where does it, I can't tell you what the future looks.
Nobody knows. All due respect, we don't know where we're going with this and what kind of costs we're going to wind up with. Is that correct, sir? I just want the voters to understand what two-and-a-half is all about. That's what we're, the whole thing, it was passed in 1980, and it was to try to keep costs of living, property taxes down to a reasonable amount so we can live here. So I, look, I'm ex-military, I know that if you, you know, you want to get what you want, you scare the heck out of people. The big boogeyman right now is nitrogen, am I correct? Is that what we're worried about? And that's why we're spending millions of dollars over our normal budget every six months.
Let me put it this way. Your question is, is there a total projected cost for the entire sewer project?
Yes.
Is there an answer to that question as we stand here tonight? Mr. Collins?
As we sit here right now, we've spent approximately 54 million in Phase One. There was a supplemental of 12 million at the meeting that you're referring to. We're seeking seven-and-a-half for the purposes of design and engineering this evening, out of which all is expected to be a debt exclusion. And then finally, there will be a figure in May that would probably be in the 80 million range.
Okay, and a major thrust is, the whole reason we're spending all this money is because we're worried about overload of nitrogen in our water system, is that correct? Right, so, and we're also going into a big building phase. You know, if you go down to Seabury, for example, you've got these huge multi-unis. So what are they doing? Do they have their own septic system already been placed? Or are we coming in behind them to pay for it?
Mr. Moderator?
John?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
May I? I think one thing that's really important to understand is, right now, it is a nitrogen, and it's a phosphorus issue, but we're under state mandate to take care of the nitrogen, remove sufficient amounts of nitrogen out of the groundwater and out of our water supply within 20 years. If we can't do that, what it would require is every resident to put in an innovative alternative system, which would cost a lot more than it's going to cost for us to move forward with sewer-ing. You've talked about the 12 million. That 12 million on top of the 54 was to build the plant, to get the plant up and operational. And in addition to that, to sewer 437 homes. Now we have an operational plant, or we will soon, that will be paid for. And the next step is to design the next collection system. So to fully utilize the plant that we built during that Phase One, the 12 million that you're talking about. That's the next step. We need to get that designed. We need to get it designed now, because right now, we're eligible for 0% financing from the state. We're eligible for forgiveness on the loans from both the county and from the Clean Water Act. We don't know how long that'll be available. But we're under mandate by the state to move forward. And as I said, if we don't, within five years, seven years, every home in Mashpee will be, that's not sewered, will require an IA system, which are very expensive.
Fantastic, I really appreciate your input on that.
Mr. Dambroski.
I just wanted to add one thing, I'll get off. We've got to consider, are we going to continue to, at the rate of development here? And, you know, sure, we've got a nitrogen problem, but we're also loading, we're getting, kind of going in on all the load as far as the development. So, hey, food for thought for the people here tonight, we're going to kind of figure this out.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ken Dambroski, three Grayfield Landing. I think one key issue when evaluating Article One to think about is, you know, we've authorized $66 million. And what do we get for the 66 million? We've got a plant and 450 connections. Okay, the plant is sized for 3,000 homes. So basically, you've got a big gap between the capacity of the plant and what we're doing. So unless you want to have a white elephant sitting out there on Asher's path, you're going to have to fund the collection systems to get this thing up to the 3,000. So basically, with respect to Article One, should be a no-brainer. You've had the capacity, now you just have to hook up the houses. You would never not hook up, you know, 3,000 houses. That said, the prior speakers do raise some key points. Is, and in my mind, there's two big questions. The 2015 plan was developed in 2015, and the 75% reduction in the nitrogen loading didn't exist at the time. So my first, you know, the question, you know, nobody's got this answer, but we should have this answer is, does the 2015 plan get us to the 75% nitrogen reduction? And the follow-on question to that is, okay, how much is this all going to cost? Okay, because again, what you're balancing off is individual costs for these IA systems against how much it's going to cost the town. And that's basically it. So, you know, again, with respect to Article One, it's a no-brainer, we got to do that. But I think the follow-on questions, we need more information on as to how much this thing's going to cost, what the pacing is over time, and how much of a burden we're going to put on the taxpayers.
Thank you, next speaker.
Christopher Nelson, thirty Palmer Road. Just to point to the previous speaker, he said, what direction are we going? We're going to the direction of cleaning up our waterways so that the children who live in this town, and my future children, can continue to live on Cape Cod. That's one of the directions that we're going, and that's first. Second, clarification, you mentioned 2030 and seven years for IA systems. Is that if we do not show progress, that at 2030, we're going to require IA systems? Or is it that those of us who are not going to be part of Phase One and Phase Two have to install IA by 2030? Or is it that since the sewer plan is under construction, you know, if we're Phase Three or Phase Four, we can join that program? We just want to get a clarification for that.
Right. So when I mention seven years, what I mean is, within two years, Mashpee has to submit to the Department of Environmental Protection a watershed permit plan. And part of that is showing that we're moving forward with sewer-ing. If we can't submit the plan and can't show that we're moving forward, and we're meeting benchmarks required by the state, then we would be looking at having innovative alternative systems in. But as we're moving forward, we have a clear, if we have a clear and coherent plan, which I'm assured we will, and we're moving forward, and we're taking the steps we need to do to move the sewer-ing forward, then that won't, we won't be moving to innovative alternatives.
Understood. As a final point, we built the plant, we built the course system. Let's connect Phase Two. Thank you.
Ms. Wagon.
Hi, Mary Wagon, thirty-five Asshumer Road. Most of you know I sit on the Plenary Board, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the Plenary Board at this time. And I am voting yes for Article One. And I do want to say there have been some concerns raised tonight regarding where sewer-ing leads us with respect to development. So really, it's up to you, okay? The development that we have is when we sewer an area and we apply for zero- The development that we have is, when we sewer an area and we apply for zero percent interest loans from the state, our flow-neutral bylaw kicks in. So those areas, if I have this right, Mr. Town Planner, are capped on that flow that's zoned for there. If we wanna go forward and expand on the densities of those areas, we have to figure out what to do with that flow-neutral bylaw. On your chair, there was a survey for housing, our housing survey. And the last meeting that I went to of the Mashpee Affordable Housing Committee, I talked to the chair about our flow-neutral bylaw, because of course you wanna put housing where your infrastructure is. But if you have this flow-neutral bylaw, how do you resolve that conflict? And that, we need you all to give us your suggestions, take that housing survey, and help guide the town through that next phase. The other thing is, I believe, New Seabury has a wastewater treatment facility, so those new houses are on a system that removes nitrogen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Terry Ronhock, One-O-Four DeGrasse Road. I've had an opportunity to do a little bit of canvassing and door-knocking to support this article, and I've heard from some residents that they're not interested in this, they don't want the article, and we don't really need this, and it's too expensive. And I've tried to make the point that this isn't really a choice, we don't have a choice. I kind of liken it to someone who goes out and buys themselves lots of nice, new clothes, new shoes, they spend all their money on looking really good, but they don't save any money for nutrition and health, they don't take care of themselves. And so I see that's what's happening in Mashpee. I mean, we've done some nice things in this town. We've built a nice town hall, a fire station, a library, we spent a lot of money doing nice things, and boy, our town looks nice. And we also have a lot of beautiful, nice resources, natural resources, that attract people here. But unfortunately, unless we take care of what's important, our health, in this case, our water resources are the health of this town. If we don't invest in that, then the town is going to become sick, and sicker, and sicker. And it's not, this isn't a choice, we don't, this isn't a luxury. Phase Two is really important to moving forward because it sewers the most houses. We had to support Phase One in order to get the plant up, but we also need to sewer those houses, or we're not going to improve the health of the town. And unfortunately, over the years, maybe we should've thought of sewer-ing before we made some other investments, maybe we should've thought of the internal health and natural resources of the town before we beautified the town from the way it looks on the outside, but we didn't do that. And now we're here today. You and I were here today because we have to take care of the health of this town, we have to preserve the health of this town. And this article helps us do that. It sewers, of all the phases, it sewers the most houses, it gets the most nitrogen out, and it satisfies the most important parts of the state requirements that we're gonna need. So I'm hoping that people will think about, even though it's, this is a financial expense burden, we think about how important it is to take care of our town, the health of our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick thing before the next speaker speaks. If anybody here has reason to think that their clicker is not working, raise your hand, and Debbie Kay, the town clerk, will get you a replacement. They are all working, they've been tested, and when you do vote, if you notice in that little window, it'll register okay after you've pressed the button. But if you have some skepticism about that, replacements are available. And finally, there's a John Thomas in the hall, I believe, if you could contact the town clerk to retrieve your driver's license. We have five hundred and ninety-four voters here tonight. Yes?
Mr. Moderator, it's John Thomas Pitts.
Pitts, sorry about that. Two out of three ain't bad. Sorry about that, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Sharon D. Francesco, Eighty-Titler Road. I wonder if anyone from the Finance Committee would like to speak on why they voted five-zero against? Unless I'm reading that wrong.
In the original addressing of this, we did, the Finance Committee did not feel it had enough financial information to recommend the article, with the new modification the Finance Committee has recommended at seven-zero.
Was it simply that the numbers crunched well for you?
We did not see any numbers. We just saw that there was an ask of, to put a burden on the taxpayers of seven-point-five million dollars, with no information as to how it was gonna be paid.
So you're happy with how it will be paid?
Under the new proposed article, yes.
Thank you.
Just to clarify that, the Finance Committee originally voted on the original article in the warrant in opposition. When the article was modified last Thursday, and that's what we're discussing tonight, as you heard earlier, both the Select Board and the Finance Committee voted unanimously to favor the updated article. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Susan Dangle, Catuah Road. I just wanted to stress the importance of this particular article tonight. We really do need to get a design of this next phase, particularly if we're going to obtain the money that we requested from the state. They're going to be making their decisions in January, and we need a design. So if we don't have it, we might have to forego the money we've asked for at zero percent with principal forgiveness. It was a few years ago that I started my journey in trying to save the waters of this town that I love. My lake this year was pea-soup-green. It's seven hundred and fifty acres of water. All of it was pea-soup-green. It has to stop. It really has to stop. This is so important. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator? I'm sorry, Mr. Collins?
I just wanna advise the audience, 'cause I believe that there was reference made to the Select Board vote, as well as the FinCon vote, but I also want you to know that the Sewer Commission was unanimous in support of this. I just, I'm throwing that out there for information purposes. Thank you.
Thank you for adding that. Are we ready to vote on Article One? Get your clickers ready. You will vote yes if you favor it, and no if you do not. This is a vote that requires a two-thirds majority vote. Vote now. It appears that the ayes have it. Article Number Two, Mr. O'Hara.
Actually, Mr. Moderator?
One thing first. Mr. Cotton?
I move that the town vote to dispense with the reading of the annual town meeting warrant articles.
Thank goodness. All those in favor of my not reading, or anybody not reading the rest of the warrant?
Aye.
We'll take a voice vote on that. Thank you. Article Two, Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article Two as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Select Board Recommendation?
The Select Board recommends approval of Article Two by a four-to-zero vote.
Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Two by a vote of six-zero.
Discussion on Article Two? Planning Board, which will include the Planning Board Recommendation?
Thank you. Mary Wagen, Vice Chair of the Planning Board. On September sixth, twenty-twenty-three, the Planning Board held a public hearing and voted unanimously to recommend that town meeting vote to approve Article Two.
Discussion? Apparently, there is none. So we will vote on Article Two. This also requires a two-thirds vote. Are we ready? Vote now. The motion is carried four hundred and seventy-six to fifty-eight. Article Three, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Three as printed in the warrant. The Select Board recommends approval of Article Three by a vote of five to zero.
Second.
Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Three by a vote of six-zero.
Planning Board?
Wagen, Vice Chair of the Planning Board. On September sixth, the Planning Board held a public hearing on Article Three and voted unanimously to recommend that town meeting vote to approve Article Three.
Discussion on this article? Hearing none, get ready to vote. Vote now. The motion carries by a vote of four-seventeen to sixty-four. Article Number Four, Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Four as printed in the warrant.
A second.
Select Board Recommendation?
The Select Board recommended approval of Article Four by a vote of four-zero.
Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Four by a vote of six-zero.
Planning Board?
Planning Board held a public hearing on September sixth, twenty-twenty-three, and after that public hearing, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend that town meeting vote to approve Article Four.
Any discussion on Article Four? Yes, sir.
Walt Lankow, Twenty-Nine Riverside Road. Article Four, based on the size restriction, I don't know if anybody knows how small nine-hundred square feet is, but my children are designing an apartment for my wife and I, so that we can spend our final years in a little bit of comfort and dignity, and nine-hundred square feet just doesn't do it. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Article Four? Yes, ma'am?
My name's Pamela McCarthy, I live on Leamington Lane. I just wanna point out to folks that I live in a house that is nine-hundred-and-sixty square feet. Before that, I lived in an apartment that was eight-hundred square feet. I lived very comfortably.
Further discussion on this article? Seeing or hearing none, we'll proceed with the vote. Vote now. This, too, is a two-thirds vote. The motion carries by a vote of four-hundred-seven to one-twenty-one. Article Five, Ms. Wyman-Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Five as printed in the warrant. The Select Board recommends Article Five four-to-zero.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee does not recommend approval of Article Five by a vote of five to one.
Planning Board?
Planning Board, on September sixth, the Planning Board held a public hearing, and after that public hearing, the Planning Board voted three to one to recommend that town meeting vote to approve Article Five.
Discussion on Article Five?
Hi, Mr. Moderator, how are you?
I'm fine, how are you? Do you have your clicker?
I have my clicker, and I'm very excited at work.
Wonderful, thank you.
Marjorie Clapperud, I live at One-Ninety-Five Waterway. I'm here in opposition to this particular article, and I don't know if everyone has read it, but it seems as though it's a blatant restriction on homeowners who have these units, and they choose sometimes to rent it for a week, sometimes for a month, sometimes for six months. As I read this, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but as I read this, it requires that you either rent for twelve months, or you don't rent at all. And I think that it's so bizarre, I couldn't really believe that it was on tonight's warrant. There are so many people here in this room that, for one reason or another, have these units. Some did it to provide affordable housing, as we all recall. Some did it to provide housing for their moms, or their grandsons who are going to college nearby. But if you go, and I should say, under the heading of full disclosure, as I did when I moved here, you go to housing, and you talk to everyone in the town to make sure that if you're going to improve your property, you wanna do it by the letter of the law. I'm not the only Mashpee homeowner who did that. Made sure we did everything right, made sure we invested the proper funds to make everything right, and had all of the permits in order, and had all of the inspections. So I now hold what a lot of people in this room hold, and that's a nice little permit and certificate that I have hanging up. And my grandchildren tell me they don't want me to rent it, they wanna be the only dwellers. Well, that might happen. Or I may lose my job, and I may wanna rent it out for revenue, and I may wanna rent it out six times for two months. This article prohibits that. I may wanna rent it out twelve times for one month, I may wanna rent it out for three months and use it myself for mine. Where does the town of Mashpee get the authority to come in and tell us how we can rent, right, and use our dwellings? I buy by the law, and I think everybody that showed up tonight, it's an incredible showing. We have the right to determine, within the boundaries of the law, how we wanna use it, how we wanna rent it or not rent it. And so I strongly urge my neighbors and colleagues to vote no.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, Alana Doyle, One-Forty-Eight Sunset Strip. I was a great advocate for initial ADU bylaw, for those of you who are- I was a great advocate for initial ADU bylaw. For those of you who aren't familiar with what an ADU is, it's an accessory dwelling unit. Many people have called it an in-law apartment. That basically is the style of the unit of housing that's added to your property. One of the biggest reasons that people advocated for ADUs was for people who wanted to have their in-laws or parents or members of their family move into that unit on their property. And as I read this, I'm starting to think that that wouldn't be allowed if I were to build an ADU, say, at my house for my brother, and I don't rent it to him. I just let him live there. Is that not allowed within this new guideline if it were to be enacted?
Town Planner, Mr. Lair, with his blue card.
Mr. Moderator, nothing about this article would prevent a homeowner from allowing a family member or a cousin, a mother, a friend to occupy the apartment free of charge, but it would require you provide to the building apartment at the time of an application a lease demonstrating that someone is occupying it on a year-round basis. Now, the lease terms are completely up to you to dictate. They could be for zero dollars per month. But that would demonstrate compliance with this amendment if approved. I guess I would also just state, as further speakers add to this discussion, that the original purpose and intent of the accessory apartment bylaw is to create year-round rental housing. So this article submitted by the Planning Board for Town Meeting Consideration was merely to bolster the purpose and intent of the bylaw to encourage year-round rentals as opposed to all of the other rental terms that have been contemplated by prior speakers. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan.
Thank you both. Next.
Mike Brownhawk, one oh four Grass Road.
You have your clicker.
I have my clicker.
Thank you much.
So I would urge people to vote against this in a couple of reasons. Article Three and Four welcome changes to the AD rules that, you know, frees it up. It gives the people that have them more flexibility to live in the smaller area and rent the larger area. Those are all good things. Bad thing is when you start dictating how long you can rent this thing for and putting a minimum on it like that. There's already a minimum in place for these to be rented so they don't become Airbnbs, if that's someone's concern. You can't rent them by the week now already, but a one-year lease is definitely restrictive to the property. It takes away a lot of options. There's a lot of people, I think, that probably would like to rent it for someone that wants to live here for six months out of the year and then get in their car and hit the Florida, and the house is empty, and everything's good to go. You also have people that would like to come here from southern states that, you know, snowbirds or whatever you want to call them, would like to rent a place for the whole summer, but that would restrict them from being able to do that. The other issue is that, if there's anybody that's ever rented a property or knows someone who rented a property, they know the state laws are really strict. And if you get a bad renter in there now, it's already an issue. It takes you well over a year probably to get them out. And if you have a twelve-month lease, that's even more of a problem. So just imagine writing a twelve-month lease to somebody. On month two, they decide not to pay anymore. They're in your home, and you can't get them out because they have a twelve-month lease. And it also incentivizes owners not to register them. Why would someone do that? If they get a bad renter in there, they get a bad situation, and they go through that, they're not going to register them anymore. They're not going to put, go through the things. They'll just rent the thing, and who's going to, who's going to police that? You know, for you to find, it's good to have to have a neighbor complain or something. Other than that, you're not going to know the difference. They say, okay, I'm not renting it anymore. They live there for free. They pay me cash, whatever. The town's not going to know. So you're just asking for people to skirt around that by restricting. It's already restricted. You don't have to increase the restriction. It's not going to be, none of them are going to become Airbnbs. You can't do that now anyways. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, thank you. Diane Phillips, Whaler Road. So my major concern is we can't deny that this is a seasonal community with a large influx of people here, and I understand.
Could you speak up just a bit, please?
Wow, that's a first.
Or get closer to the microphone?
I'm tall. So my concern is with the seasonal influx needed here for workers, this would eliminate a place for seasonal workers to stay. So where are the J-1 community going to live? Where are all the workers that we need for the restaurants, the bartenders, the waitstaff that come here seasonally? We would eliminate a place for them to stay, and it's inappropriate. We need that workforce, and we do already have the duration in place, so I'm against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
How you doing? Joe Crispin, sixty-five Horseshoe Bend. My, actually, my first question is, the Finance Committee did not approve this. I was wondering if somebody wants to speak up and tell us why.
Go ahead. Mr. McKelvey.
Good evening. I can tell you why I didn't support it, and I think the majority didn't either, is because it was too restrictive. We felt twelve months was too long of a timeframe to force someone to rent with seasonal workers, like the last lady just said. Some other options. We just felt it was too restrictive. Thank you.
Yes, I think I would agree with that as well. And it seems like the reason for this was to provide more long-term capacity, which, I guess logically, at least for me, doesn't make any sense because anybody who's going to want to do a short-term rental, I think it's a very high bar, and I would say a stretch, in terms of wanting to take that commitment for a twelve-month lease. I think there's some good speakers up here that brought up, you know, the risk, the risk there, the difficulty of removing, you know, a tenant that may not be up to par. Yeah, I would say dramatic restrictions involved in language like this. And also just some confusion here. My first question is, if a new ADU is stood up, is this language saying you are forced to rent it? Meaning it cannot be used for your, say, family?
Your answer is en route.
Could you just repeat your question for me?
So if somebody constructs a new ADU, are they forced? Do they have to rent it? And not only do they have to rent it, but they have to rent it for twelve months?
As the article is drafted, a new ADU that would be constructed with a permit from the Building Department would be required to be rented for twelve months with a lease submitted to the Building Department at twelve-month intervals from the date that building permit was issued.
Yeah, that's wild. My, my next question is, there's language here that says that the principal dwelling, I'm sorry, the principal dwelling or the accessory apartment, apartment cannot be rented for a period of less than twelve months. Does that mean with this ADU language, we're kind of sneaking in, oh, yeah, by the way, you can't even rent your primary for less than twelve months? Sneaky.
If you have an accessory apartment in your, in your house now, or if this article were to pass, you cannot rent both units at the same time, so one or the other must be rented for twelve months at a time.
So.
I need you to ask your questions again. I thought I answered the question.
So you're saying that if we have an accessory dwelling.
Could I have your name, please?
My name's Ashley, and I live at sixty-five Horseshoe Bend Way with Joe. We have an accessory dwelling and a primary dwelling, so one would have to sit empty. How does that help our housing crisis?
Well.
We cannot rent them both at the same time.
There's an assumption that you are occupying one of the units. So if you are not occupying one of the units, yes, one would presumably stay empty because you cannot rent both units.
But if life takes us out of Mashpee and we can't live in our primary unit or our ADU now that Article Three has passed, one would just sit empty?
Yes, in that event, your choices would be to rent one and leave the other vacant. If that did not work for your personal situation, you would sell your home?
I am very much in disagreement with that.
All right, this, this is the reason that we'll be voting on this. Do you have any other specific questions that have not already been presented?
Yeah, so I just, I just want to confirm, not, not only kind of with the confusion and maybe kind of counterproductive language, just as it relates to the ADUs, that everybody should know that there's a Trojan horse in here, and that Trojan horse is not being able to rent your primary for no less than twelve months. Thank you.
Thank you.
I recognize Mr. Lair.
Mr. Moderator, I just feel, based on that last question, there's some clarity that would be required because I think there was some implication by the last speaker's questions about. People can't hear me? I can hear myself quite loud.
A little louder.
It sounded, based on that particular hypothetical, that if you did not occupy one of the two units, which the article that was previously authorized would allow, one of the two would remain vacant. The town has voted in the past that it is not interested in allowing rentals of both units. Now, based on the prior speaker's question, it appeared to me that they are stably housed elsewhere. I understand that that is not the situation for everybody. But in that, there's a nuance to the way that question was presented that I think Town Meeting needs to consider. But I do want to be perfectly clear that the language of this article would not allow both units, your principal dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit, to be rented at the same time. You would have to rent one or the other for periods of twelve months at a time. Thank you.
Is there anybody that wants to introduce a point of view that we've not yet heard? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Alexa Fox on Treetown Circle, and I agree.
Louder, please.
And I, Alexa Fox on Treetown Circle, and I agree with everyone else's, and I'm definitely against this. Besides this being a vacation location for people to come for the summer, a lot of people only have two weeks. They don't have a month, a year to take a lease. So we're cutting out people coming to the Cape and helping our economy. Also about the J-1s and the college students that come here to work, but also what about the visiting nurses and doctors that come? I have an Airbnb, and we almost had some doctors rent it because they were going to work at Cape Cod Hospital, but Cape Cod Hospital dropped the ball. But my point is, we need the health workers here as well, so I'm totally against this. Thank you.
You're not next. The gentleman in the rack, in the rear.
Hi, Russell Peters, forty-two Low Road in Mashpee. I also own a house at three oh six Great Neck Road. My wife and I live at the forty-two Low Road, which was a house that she inherited from her father. And the house that I have at three oh six Great Neck Road has my son in it. If I built an auxiliary dwelling on that house there and put my other son in there, that, that wouldn't qualify in, under this, under these rules here. And also, I would like to clarify, what would be the fine on that if that, if it to be imposed if that was to be?
Could you repeat that last part? What would be what?
What would be the fine if that was violated?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lair.
On the first part of the speaker's question and the situation relative to his second home where his son is occupying the principal dwelling, he would, he would have to make the son an owner in some capacity on the latest recorded date of the property. If he were to do that, he could construct an ADU and have that be rented to his other son because his son A, we'll say A, is occupying the principal dwelling and would be an owner of that principal dwelling. So in that event, that would be accommodated. If there are any violations in any accessory apartment, however, that's any violation, whether it's in that particular hypothetical or any other one, the fines are three hundred dollars per day, every day that the violation persists.
I think the lady, again, in, she yields to you, so.
Yvonne Courtney, thirty-five Press McLean. I would like to know the people who proposed this particular warrant, why, excuse me, why they proposed this. It was my understanding that there's a serious problem in the town of Mashpee for affordable housing. Many young people cannot afford to buy homes. They cannot afford to live here, and I know many young people who had to move from Mashpee and other places on the Cape because they cannot afford affordable housing. There are workers in the town, people who have children who would like to live here year-round. The availability of affordable housing is extremely limited. So I think you have to decide, what do you want? Do you want affordable housing, or do you want people to rent on short term? So I think, to me, that is the question you have to answer.
Ms. Wagan.
Okay, it was my idea. You know professionally, I work in affordable housing, and we hear a lot of complaints from some towns about ADUs being built to create housing, to house our residents, and they become Airbnb nightmares, and they disrupt the neighborhood. So that was my thought, that the whole concept for the ADU bylaw was to create high-quality, year-round housing, and that, to me, means twelve months. And right now, you have to rent it at least thirty days, consecutive days. So the bylaw, the ADU bylaw in Mashpee was not intended to make Airbnb, two-week rental kind of things. They were made to have housing with dignity for people on the Cape that needs housing. But anyways, it's up to you, and if it doesn't pass, okay, we'll go back to the drawing board to, maybe another idea will come up. Take your housing service. You all have that.
We try to be fairly generous on allowing an unusual amount of time for difficult questions. I have not yet heard anybody speak to favoring this article, with the exception of the person from the Planning Board. Is there any such person in the hall? If there is not, I see no need for further discussion and would welcome a question to, a motion to move the question. Is a motion to move the question, is there a second? This is not debatable. It requires a two-thirds vote. Vote now. This is, this is a question to end debate and to vote on the question. I'm sorry, sir? No. We're voting on whether to end debate on this article. Then we will vote on the article. Does anybody else? Okay. So this is, this is new technology. That motion was not scripted, so it takes a moment to enter it so you can see it. All right, so the question is whether to end debate and then move on to vote to the article. It requires a two-thirds vote. If you are in favor of moving the question and getting on to voting on this article, say yes. Vote now. Vote now with your clicker. Vote now with your clicker. So, we have voted to end the debate, 371 to 127. Now we move on to vote on Article Number Five. Get your clickers ready. You will vote yes if you want to approve Article Five, you will vote no if you are against it. 20 seconds, vote now. Article Five did not achieve the required two-thirds vote. It is defeated. Article Six, Mr. Cotton.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve Article Six as printed in the warrant. The Select Board recommends approval of Article Six by a four to zero.
I second.
Thank you. Finance Committee.
The Finance, thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Six by a vote of seven to zero.
Any discussion on Article Six?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Lynn Barbie, 73 Surf Drive. With your permission, Mr. Moderator, the person who initiated this is currently the Chair of the Planning Board and is ill at home and was not able to attend, and she provided me with a written statement that she asked me to please read. It says, "This proposed tree preservation bylaw, having the unanimous support of the Select Board, the Finance Committee, and the Planning Board, is very much needed by our town. As you drive around Mashpee, you often hear chainsaws humming and wood chippers pulverizing trees. The town gets urgent calls from residents that someone on a nearby lot is clearcutting trees, and the resident asks, 'What can the town do about it? Without this tree bylaw, the answer is absolutely nothing. By passing this bylaw tonight, you will be saving the trees, which not only purify our air, but beautify our neighborhoods, increase our property values, make Mashpee more climate resilient, and improve our health and general well-being. This bylaw strikes a balance between property rights and the public's interest in preserving the character and beauty of Mashpee. It also gives developers a financial incentive to retain significant trees on lots when they renovate or build new dwellings. Please vote yes for this bylaw to help keep Mashpee healthy and beautiful." Thank you, Karen Faulkner.
Thank you, Ms. Barbie. Next speaker, yes, sir.
My name is Dave Consalvi. I live at Turmeline Drive in Mashpee, a former landscaper. And I'd like to give you five reasons why I don't think we should vote for this, even though our illustrious boards have said that they're in favor of it. Number one, we have an efficient and well-working Conservation Commission that's already set up about what trees we can cut where. Number two, I don't know of any places around the town where I've seen clearcutting. The way I understand it is acreage being cut down. Three, we already have, um, areas set aside in the town as conservation areas and wildlife refuges where there are many multiple trees. And number three, uh, any business that submits a plan to build a building or whatever, they always have to supply a plan for redoing landscaping around the property. And the next reason I have against that is I show that many of the, uh... Not many, but it gives the Planning Board, if you ask me, too much power that they really shouldn't have to say who should cut what tree where and when. And the last thing, I don't know any places around Mashpee where we have giant sequoias that we need to protect. When I first moved here, the trees were half the size that they are now. And there are many, many places where there weren't any trees, and there are much more trees now, much more forested than when I first moved here 54 years ago. Enough said.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Sharon D. Francesco, 80 Citrat Road. Article Six seems to me to be Exhibit A for what's wrong with local, state, and federal government. I mean, this is eight-plus pages about a tree on property owned by another person. I'm speechless. What are we doing here? If it's that complicated, maybe, maybe it's, um... Maybe it should be, uh, it should not pass. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ken Marster, 77 Bay Shore Drive. I've lived in this town since 1986. I own a prime homes building company. I've been building homes since 1986. And, um, I have never heard of a problem with clearcutting before. And I'm going to tell you the reason why we don't like to clearcut. Now, the, uh, example they reference is Algonquin. Algonquin was a bad situation between the town and a very bad person. This person wanted, if I'm correct, wanted to put in a solar farm or do something. The town denied him, and out of spite, he didn't clear an acre. He didn't cut a house lot. He wasn't a builder. He cleared 13 acres. He wiped up a total of 13 acres, out of spite. We don't do that, okay? Let me tell you what we do when we build a home. We will take a, and let me tell you the cost of taking trees down. It costs $2,000 to clear a lot. It's crazy, isn't it? It's cheap. But these people recycle the product. They sell the woodchips, and then they sell the logs to logging companies, so they make a lot of money off of that. That in turns lowers the cost to people, individuals. Individuals build homes too. When I build a home, it's for an individual. It's not for me, the builder. It's for the individual. So it's $2,000. Well, in this article here, it would probably cost me $2,000 to replace those trees. And we're talking, I could have 30 to 40, we're talking tens and tens and tens of thousands of dollars to replace the trees. And Ms. Faulkner said that we need an incentive to, um, not take the trees down. We have the incentive. People don't come up to me and say, "Hey, Ken, the first thing I want you to do when I move into my new home is clearcut the lot because I want to see my neighbors to the left, I want to see my neighbor to the right, and I want to see my neighbor to the back." That doesn't happen. What they say to me is save every tree. We'll go down and we'll mark areas so we save every tree. In the typical lot that I clear, and I've built 350 homes in Mashpee, and one of the reasons why it's up here, I'm speaking, is I want to defend our profession because I can read the tea leaves a little bit. I've built 350 homes in Mashpee in 37 years. Each one had 15 feet to the right, 15 feet to the left. That's the back. 40 feet in the front, because you have to clear 40 feet in the front. You have to clearcut it because you have to put your septic system in, and you can't put trees on top of a septic system, and 30 feet to the back. That is all we clear. And we clear it for marketability. People don't want to see their neighbors. And we save money that way. So we have the incentives. We don't need the incentives to not take down trees. We want to clear trees. Trees are wonderful. They're great. And anybody who clearcuts a lot should go to jail, okay? That's the way I look at it. Another thing too is how many lots are we talking about here? Does anybody have, how many more buildable lots are there in the town of Mashpee? Does anybody have an answer for me? Hi, Evan. I met with Evan today.
Ken, I gave you those figures in my office this morning. I don't have them with me, but I hope you have them today.
Well, I do have them, and I disagree with them, okay? That's the problem. It's, I think it's a smaller number, but I do appreciate what you did. But that's okay, Evan. You didn't approve the question. People who approved it up there had no idea how many lots they were voting on. Well, I can tell you, that number is a lot smaller than you think. It's probably in the hundreds, maybe even less. It's in the hundred, low hundreds, 200 maybe? We are built out. When was the last time, in the last system of the Planning Board, when is the last time a member of the Planning Board approved a subdivision over 25 lots in the town of Mashpee? Dennis? 20 years? Yeah, 20 years. 20 years! And I heard it went over development. That's a good thing. I'm all for it. I'm all for it. I've been in here for 37 years, and every lot I have built on was a pre-existing, non-conforming lot and remains that way right now. I have two subdivisions in town. One was a 1986 permit, and the other one was a 1976 permit. We're not creating any new lots. So we don't create new lots. The lots are limited. What are the supply of lots? They're low. They're very low. And this article will affect only a few lots. Why do you think people are paying $250,000 to $300,000 for a lot? Supply and demand. There's no lots out there. So this, I'm for preserving the lots, and we're all about that. Now, I just want to know...
If you could reach a conclusion soon, that would be appreciated.
Well, that's why I'm good reading tea leaves, aren't I? Yeah, this, that lot, it's not needed. We don't clearcut lots. And it doesn't affect that many lots at all. We're built out, and you hear about this overdevelopment, overdevelopment? Here today, one more fact, okay, because people own these facts. This would have affected 13 lots. We've had 13 lots from January to September that pulled building permits that needed their trees cut. You know, it's not a big number. Thank you.
Does anyone have anything to amplify what we've already heard? Or that does not amplify what we've already heard? Ms. Sprout.
Felice Sprout, 91 Cliniquisette Avenue. I've been in this town since 1978 on the lot that I have and acquired a second lot. And over the years, things like Hurricane Bob removed 14 trees. That was beyond my control. But as we cleared it out, we improved it, and we now have a farm. And nobody's ever thought about food security. And I know that I talked with Ms. Faulkner way back in June about this, and I told her that if I was to come to this town today and just with those two lots, which add up to less than three acres, I would not be able to build that farm. And for everybody that's ever enjoyed tomatoes or whatever, it just wouldn't exist because we would not be able to do what we do with this restriction. And I do not like, it sounds like we're creating a slush fund here, you know, fines with the trees and everything. My opinion on these legislation articles is if it isn't precise and simple enough to understand, go back to the drawing board, cut it into pieces. But this is just too big, too complicated, and I think there's going to be a lot unintended consequences. And we don't need to vote for it. Thank you.
I will allow two more brief speakers on this topic.
Mike Bronhock, 104 DeGrasse. Here's my clicker. I think this article should not be approved. Couple reasons, major reasons. It's very restrictive to any property owners. There's such a thing in the state of Massachusetts or anywhere in the country to have property owners' rights. This is beyond property owners' rights. I agree with Mr. Marsters, how many lots are being built? But this doesn't apply only to builders in new construction. This is any type of construction on your property. Just think about any homeowner in here decides they want to clear out a little patch in their back and put a vegetable garden. You're going to have to come to the town of Mashpee, have someone come out, measure every tree, determine what the tree is, measure every tree, then decide whether you can cut them down or not, and also what they're going to charge you, with nothing in this article says what the charge is going to be. So, um, and you can think of 100 different projects that you would want to do on your property that you have to maybe take one tree, five trees, six trees out. Or even dead trees. You're going to have to deal with the town on this. I mean, this is just ridiculous to have to have layers and layers and layers of red tape. You're going to have to deal with someone coming out and doing all this stuff. And this is spurred by one person with terrible judgment and a vindictive attitude towards the town. Everybody here that lives in town understands and knows who this person is that caused this whole ruckus, right? And he's, you know, that's, it's just not a reason to do this. I have a friend that lives in Concord, Mass, and they're the only town I know of that has...
Sir, with all due respect to your friend in Concord, I think we understand your point. I'd like to hear from the next speaker.
Well, I want to tell you, they have a law just like this, and the amount of money it costs them to do anything in their town is ridiculous.
Thank you for your opinion. The next speaker, please, who is the gentleman standing behind you? Briefly.
Christian Nielsen, 30 Palmer Road. Just a point of clarification. As I understand it, based on Definition 175-2, so it says that we could cut trees down if someone is building a dwelling or making a renovation. And second, what about emergency situations? During the blizzard two years ago, I had my buddy's tree almost ended up landing on top of his house. The only reason it didn't is because me and three others went over there with a chainsaw and pulled it away. Would we be fined for that emergency situation in that application?
Mr. Lehrer.
Mr. Moderator, there are clearly a number of misconceptions about how the bylaw would function, so I would just like to take a minute before calling the question to enumerate some of those issues.
Minute sounds good.
First, this article only pertains to what qualifies under the definition of a building activity. You will note in Section 175-2 definitions, a series of quote-unquote "building activities" that would trigger the application of this particular bylaw. The vast majority of activities in the town would be subject to receiving a certificate of exemption. Most activities are exempt from the provisions of this bylaw. What this bylaw is really catered at addressing are vacant, undisturbed lots that have been untouched. If you're an existing property owner, you have a home on your lot, you have a big tree near your house that's bothering you, you have every right to take that down. You do not need to seek an approval from my office if you're not conducting a building activity. Furthermore, the only part of your lot that is impacted by the provisions of this bylaw, if you are indeed undertaking a building activity, would be those portions of your lot that fall within your existing setback areas. Generally in Mashpee, in the R3 and the R5 zoning district, that's 15 feet on the sides, 15 feet to the rear, and 40 feet to the front. That would be what's referred to as your tree yard in the bylaw. Now, most lots in Mashpee are pre-existing, non-conforming lots, developed at a time when the requirements were much smaller. Or you have, you live in a development that's subject to a cluster subdivision special permit where there's a unique set of dimensional criteria assigned to your particular property. So whatever setbacks apply to your lot will be what defines your tree yard. If you have a special, if you live in a subdivision whose special permit dictates you have a 10-foot front setback, five feet to the sides, and 15 feet to the rear, that is your tree yard, and thus, everything within the tree yard is not governed by the provisions of the bylaw. That's everything in the middle. So the vast majority of activities that I think have just been contemplated, like the vegetable garden or Ms. Sprout's farm, for example, if you are not conducting a building activity, you are not subject to the provisions of the bylaw. And furthermore, I heard just one speaker mention the Conservation Commission. Properties within wetlands jurisdiction are also specifically exempted from the provisions of this bylaw with the understanding that we have an outstanding conservation agent, an outstanding conservation staff, and volunteers in the Conservation Commission who are bound to the terms of the Wetlands Protection Act to ensure the protection of trees within wetland jurisdiction. So there's another exemption. So again, this article is pertaining specifically to building activities impacting most notably vacant, pre-existing, non-conforming lots or conforming lots if they're undisturbed.
Is there anybody that wishes to support this article? With an argument we've not already heard? Briefly.
My name is Daryl Christensen, 58 Yard Arm Drive. Across the back of my property is a fence separating me and Willow Van Gogh. Three weeks ago, when I looked out, I looked across the fence, and there was a mature stand, oak trees, white pine, and an undergrowth of other trees. It was quite beautiful. Today, after they clearcut it, there is not so much as one twig standing. Not one twig. It's nothing but sand and bulldozers off topsoil. Not one twig. Not one twig. I'm telling you, we need this. Please vote for it.
Final speaker, Ms. Wagan.
Thank you. Mary Wagan, 35, Ashument Road. The impetus of this bylaw, Mr. Bronhock, I need to disagree with you, was not that lot that you're talking about, not Algonquin at all, or that awful tree hater. But it was actually a lot that got clearcut on Mashpee Neck Road, and Mount Mashpee was born. And that was a disgrace for the town, and the town didn't have any way to get in there and enforce something different. Anyways, for me, the reason why I'm supporting... Anyways, for me, the reason why I'm supporting this is I just spent seven point five million dollars in this room to sewer the town. There is no way that searing is going to do it. We need to conserve the ecology that protects our waters. So, we passed the flood plain, the no fill in the flood plain bylaw earlier today, that's great. This is too, because this conserves trees in town and helps protect our water. Thank you.
Thank you all for the discussion. This is not a zoning article, so it does not require a two-thirds vote. It's a general bylaw for the town that's proposed. So are we ready to vote? All those who favor the article will vote yes, those opposed will vote no. Vote now. It appears the article has passed two sixty-one to two forty-five. Article number seven, Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Motion I move the town to vote to approve Article seven as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action related thereto."
Second.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article seven by a five to zero vote.
Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of Article seven by a vote of six to zero.
This is a fairly routine article, is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's proceed to the vote. All those in favor will vote yes on your clicker, and the opposite for no. Vote now. Article number seven passes three seventy-nine to forty-four. Article eight, Ms. Sherman.
I move the town vote to approve Article eight as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action related thereto."
Second.
Select Board recommends Articles eight, five to zero.
Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of Article eight by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, any discussion on Article eight? Hearing none, grab your clicker and vote yes or no accordingly. Vote now. This is a majority vote. This article passes four hundred thirty to forty. Article number nine, which is by petition from Mr. Vota.
Good evening. My name is Steve Vota, I live at forty-three Barbary Circle.
A little louder, or closer?
Stephen Vota, forty-three Barbary Circle, Mashpee. I am the president of the Bayberry Village Homeowners Association. We are the petitioner in Article nine. We are asking the town to approve petition as printed. We are a small residential community of nineteen homeowners. We have been trying to-
Mr. Vota, before you proceed with your rationale, if you could make a motion.
I make a motion that the town approve the petition as it is presented.
It's been made and seconded, you may proceed.
We are a small community of nineteen homeowners. We have taken every step we can to stay ahead of our roads. Our roads are currently paved, and with foresight, we have been planning to upgrade some drainage issues that we had. And with the proposed sewerage issue that's coming forward, we would like to do this in one procedure so that the roads would conform to any requirements the town would have that would allow for sewerage or water and other ground utilities that would need to be replaced.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on Article nine? Apparently not. Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. This is not a two-thirds vote either. All those in favor will say yes, those opposed no on your clicker. Vote now. The article passes two seventy-eight to one sixty-nine. Article ten. By petition, Mr. Whedon.
Brian Whedon, one thirty-three Main Street. I move the town vote to approve Article ten as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action relating thereto."
Select Board recommendation.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article ten by a three to zero vote, one abstention.
Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of Article ten by a vote of five to one.
Thank you, Mr. Whedon.
Wenina Khan, Ntassablis Moskato, Ntomas Mosipia, Kana Taimosipia. Say, good evening, my name is Bearhart, I come from Mashpee and live in Mashpee. For full disclosure, I am the chairman of the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe. However, I have filed this as an individual taxpayer and citizen. The bottom line is, the Old Indian Cemetery was the town cemetery prior to the Great Neck Woods Cemetery. When the town voted at the special town meeting on April seventh, two thousand and eight, Article two transferred eight parcels to the tribe, the Meeting House Cemetery, Parsonage Museum, et cetera. This article will help expand the Old Indian Cemetery, located at four-ten Meeting House Road, in support placing the parcel in trust for future generations of tribal citizens. Currently, it sits on a twelve-acre lot, and the original deed of the Meeting House, when it was given to the South Sea Praying Indians, was four hundred acres back in the sixteen hundreds, when religion was forced upon our people and we were known as the Praying Indians. This site is also listed on the National Register of Historical Places in nineteen ninety-eight, as it is the oldest Native American church in the eastern United States and the oldest church on Cape Cod. Prior to the town cemetery, the tribe did let tribal, town residents have plots, and they are allowed to be buried there. This is also something that is agreed upon in the IGA. The IGA is an intergovernmental agreement between the town and the tribe. This article will not interfere with the IGA between the town and the tribe. If the tribe was to take legal action for the parcel, I believe that would be in violation. However, following the process that was done in two thousand and eight has no impact on the current terms in the IGA. In fact, for the record, in the IGA between the town and the tribe, on page five, section two, the tribe agrees. The last sentence at the top of the page reads as follows. Furthermore, nothing herein shall prevent or preclude the tribe and town from engaging in negotiations or transactions subsequent to the date of this agreement regarding the transfer of title to or interest in any town property upon terms mutually acceptable to both parties. The bottom line is, we're losing a lot of tribal members, our cemetery is also open to spouses and community members, and we're just looking to expand the cemetery so that future generations can be buried with their loved ones. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, and I hope you would vote to approve this article.
Thank you, any further discussion on Article ten? Hearing or seeing none, we'll move on to the vote. This does require a two-thirds majority. One moment. Yeah, it is two-thirds. Sorry, Sean, if I misinformed you. You're good? Okay. This is the gentleman from Meridia, the company from whom we have this technology, so. His name is Sean. I will not give you his email address. All right, Article number ten. Those in favor of the article will use your clicker to vote yes, those against will vote no. Vote now. Article ten passes four fifty-five to thirty-nine. By the way, Sean, Article twelve will be two-thirds, too. Article number ten, Ms. Russell. Eleven, I'm sorry.
Hi, Arden Russell, Sturgis Lane. Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to indefinitely postpone Article eleven.
Any discussion? Get your clicker. If you're in favor of indefinitely postponing, you'll vote yes, otherwise no. Vote now.
One second.
One second.
No, he changes. I said one second.
They're not ready.
I heard him. Stand by. Now, yes, vote now. If you haven't already. It's rare that anybody objects to an indefinite postponement. This is no exception. Okay, Article number twelve. The lead petitioner is Talia Landry.
Talia Landry, seventy Cape Drive. So, Mr. Moderator, I move the town to vote to approve Article twelve as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action related thereto."
Made and seconded, is there a Select Board recommendation?
The Select Board makes no recommendation on Article twelve by a vote two to two.
And Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee makes no recommendation on Article twelve by a vote of four to two.
Discussion, Ms. Landry.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Weniki Suk, katapitashan, I move for staying this late and hearing this article. I just, excuse me as I speak before my elders, as I want to just make some key points, and then I would like to pass it over to some of my tribal elders. A few things that I wanted to point out is that the Select Board will have, this is, this vote is just to authorize the Select Board to begin the government-to-government discussion and negotiation with the tribal council. It does not compel the Select Board to transfer the parcels. That basically is a fancy way to say it doesn't make them do it. Also, Mashpee residents will have continued access to the town beach. The parcels are not taxable properties, therefore the town taxpayers are not losing money. The town of Mashpee Emergency Services will still have jurisdiction over the land. And this project, which is to construct a pre-contact traditional Wampanoag village site, is fully funded by the Department of Education, so there is not any means of it not being funded or getting done. So, and with that, I would like to have the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribal Chief, Earl Mills, Jr., speak on the project.
Earl Mills, Jr., two-two-four Main Street. I'm here to speak on behalf of this Article twelve. I think it would be good for the town of Mashpee to have this village. We, back in the seventies, the town attempted to construct a village of this sort in connection with a town-owned museum. Because of politics back in the seventies, the whole project ended up closing, and it went to disrepair. I think the citizens of the town would benefit. It is an educational project, but it's also a way for people to come into town. It's a reason for people to come into Mashpee and ultimately spend their dollars, you know, in our local businesses. I think it's a win-win for the community, and I vote for all of you, my fellow citizens, to vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills, next speaker.
Darryl Wixon. One forty-nine Meeting House Road.
You'll have to speak a little louder if you can, please.
Darryl Wixon, one forty-nine Meeting House Road, Mashpee. This is beneficial to everyone. We've been existing here for thousands of years. This is a time where future generations to learn their culture, and even some of your children and grandchildren can take part. We have to exist. We're people from a circle of life, the first light people. And I have been listening to people talk about the trees, the plants. Those are all our relatives. We have not made no disconnection. So, we're asking you to stay connected to us. If you don't keep this connection going, none of us will exist. I'm a relation.
Thank, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Deja Peters, I live on Wampanoag Drive. I stand here tonight as a young tribal member to state that I unequivocally support Article twelve and know it will benefit all of Mashpee. Tonight, I think about our youth who are unable to have their voices heard in this forum, and how a project like this will have such a positive impact on them. It's not easy growing up Indigenous in spaces where you don't always feel represented or seen. The establishment of this home site will give, will give our youth a desperately needed space to learn and practice their culture in an area that holds so much significance to our people. For many tribal youth, myself included, all it takes is one project or one opportunity to involve themselves in the tribe, and that then serves as a stepping stone to a continued feeling of purpose and community belonging. I know that this home site will serve as a sense of purpose for so many people, and I cannot express enough how important that is. For those of you who may not know, this town was unlawfully incorporated in the late eighteen hundreds. Up until around the nineteen seventies, which was only around fifty-three years ago, the town's majority population was still Wampanoag people. I don't say this to bring negativity to the floor, but only to give context that I feel is needed when deciding on these town matters. My great-grandmother's generation grew up in a very different Mashpee than what we know today, where most people knew one another, and they were able to live in a way that fit their cultural and spiritual needs. Today, we cannot say that, and it shows just how much this town has been gentrified in such a short amount of time. We sit here now asking you all to simply consider transferring the sacred land that we know as twelve acres to the tribe. Twelve acres of land is not a lot, considering how much the tribe has lost over the generations. Regardless of its size, that area has always been, and it will always continue to be sacred to us. And I know that having a home site there will be invaluable to our people. A vote, a yes vote on Article twelve is the right thing to do, and I hope you all can see that as I do. Katapitash, thank you.
I would, as an aside, like to compliment the speakers so far on keeping their comments brief, to the point, and understandable. Please continue, thank you.
Jay Marie Stevenson, one thirty-five Sampsonville Road. I am the chair of the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee, but I'm speaking for myself tonight. For the past twenty-five years, I have participated in a home exchange program, which is- Particularly of interest to me were the stories of Indigenous tribes, and I have been in Nevada and Utah and Arizona and you name it. But even more importantly, I have hosted families from all over the U.S. and many countries, and my fellow home exchanges want to learn about us and our cultures and do come with an interest in our Indigenous people and in specifically, they don't always know about the tribe itself until they come to Mashpee. They only know about, well, maybe we'll go see Plymouth Rock, you know, but there's something out there that they want to know. Now, there are others that come here as well. For example, I J-one workers. Many of these are, these, these are students, these are college students from all over the globe, and they're going to take back their experiences and this information. So, this is why I wholeheartedly support this article, and it would provide such a wonderful opportunity, um, right here in this town, for visitors to learn firsthand how Mashpee began and learn about the Wampanoag tribe's rich and vibrant history. This needs to be shared. It's important to note that this is the first step in a complicated process, so we're really voting to authorize our Select Board to begin this pro, this process. And what better way for our leaders here to demonstrate to our tribal members that they are valued and they are an intrinsic part of our community? So, please, let's vote for this and begin the process.
Good evening.
Mr. Moderator, Richard DeSargue, sixty-five Shields Road. The Boston Globe, Mr. Moderator, recently published a story about what it takes to make a town alive and successful. What the town needs to do, the article said, is to capitalize on the uniqueness of the town. They gave examples like Lexington and Concord with the Revolutionary War, or Lowell with the Mills, or New Bedford with the whaling. But here in Mashpee, our uniqueness is the Wampanoag history and culture. Each of us here this evening has an excellent opportunity, just as Provincetown, Provincetown did in transferring town-owned land for the building of the pilgrim monument to show vision in supporting the transfer of this so-called twelve acres. The village that will be built can become a keystone to a unique pocket of Mashpee history, all contained within one quarter-mile in the Mashpee Historic District. In this one area, you have the town archives with Mashpee's history on display, you have the historic eighteen thirty-one schoolhouse, you have the Veterans Garden containing twenty-five honor stones of those from Mashpee who gave their life for their country, you have the new war mon, monument with the names of two-hundred-and-fifty-three Mashpee men and women who went off to defend their country in time of war. Both sites are majority Wampanoags. You also have what is about to be completed, the Mashpee Historic Sign Program with the historic signage and photos of what that area used to be, and you have, of course, the Mashpee Wampanoag Museum with its excellent displays of Wampanoag history and culture. All this will be located here alongside this historic Wampanoag village, giving us the opportunity to create an historic destination location for education, local, and tourist learning experiences. Visitors will spend their money here, it will trickle down to help our business, but more important, you know, it's, we should pass for the sense of community, this article should pass because it is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, everybody. My name is Earl Cash, Jr., Terriav, Mashpee. I am the medicine man of the Mashpee Wampanoag people. And I just wanted to say to all of you who live on those lands, respect them, honor them. Go into your hearts and understand the waters. Why are we having all these problems with the waters? I just wanted to say, I can't see how we can differentiate, uh, the, uh, the difference between the two, the trees, what's good a tree and not a bad tree. The Creator made them all and they're all good. So, how can you decipher which one is not? I ask that you reach into your hearts and look inside yourselves for future generations, for your children, your grandchildren, your great-grandchildren. As we coexist here in Mashpee, I ask that you vote for this article, and I ask that you, we have that sign out there at one fifty-one, we honor the Mashpee Wampanoag people. If so, vote for this article. K'tapatshamu wa tewa me, na ta'kosah, all my relations.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Pamela McCarthy, Leamington Lane. I agree with everything everybody said. I also just want to point out that if this passes, it will give the town a golden opportunity to show other communities how to move forward with Indigenous groups. The Wampanoag were here way before us and I really feel like we should just pass this.
Yes, sir.
I'm Nathan Adams of eighty-one Edgewater Road. My main concern is that we're about to privatize a public beach. Right now, I go to that beach at Atacun Park and my kids play with Wampanoag kids, the same kids they go to school with and they're friends, and there's no problem. Now, this idea to build a Wampanoag village, that's a good idea. All, all the things about how this can enrich our town, I agree with all of those things. But I am very, very, very concerned that we're about to sign over a public beach and privatize it, because I don't want to live in a place where we have some beaches for this ethnic group and some beaches for that ethnic group. I don't want that. Yeah, I, correct, I agree. We agree on that.
Let me remind everybody that civility is the marching order of the day. We've enjoyed everybody else's presentation, give this gentleman, even if you don't agree, an opportunity.
It's taken me a lot to come up here and disagree with almost everyone in the room, but, look, this is the, this is my concern, is that we're going to end up separating people. I, I don't think that's good. I do agree that we should build this thing, but I think that we should keep the beach as a town beach and we should have the upland to be developed into this Wampanoag village. That can be done.
You've made your point. Next speaker.
Just to follow up on that comment again, I'll reiterate what I said in the beginning, is that there is no intent or there will be absolutely no way that this will be a privatized beach. That is not a concept of Wampanoag people, as we've mentioned before and as you could hear in the audience, there is not one private beach that is made from Indigenous people. And regardless of, of that in general, this just opens up the discussion. The parcels are, are set by the town, so that's why they were set in the book, book that way, but it's not necessarily how it would be enacted, depending on negotiations and such. But also to remember that the Mashpee Baptist Church owns some land on the beach and there's nobody telling anybody that if you aren't a churchgoer that you can't go on that side, so this would be the same exact thing as far as partnering within the community. Nobody's going to go up and tell anybody that they're not allowed off on a beach. We don't put gates up, we don't put fences up, and that's just not our way.
It appears we have one more speaker. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Adicus Lopes Pocknet, Alice Lopez Drive, formerly Meeting House. Um, the only thing I really want to say is, you mentioned your children and our children and your children go to the same school. My daughter used to go to Mashpee Public School, and her teacher, despite having four other Mashpee Wampanoag children in that classroom, two of which are educators and published writers, handed out a schoolbook that put all of the Wampanoags in past tense. That's a rasher. If for that to not happen again, I need that teacher, who was a, it was her first year, to be able to have a place to come to our town or to teach our children and their parents to go to their town, which would be the Mashpee Village. We don't want to privatize a beach. You can't privatize land, you can't privatize water. That's all I really have to say.
Mr. Whedon.
I'm not sure if this mic is working. I work in the realm of historic preservation and, you know, in past conversations with town planner, Mr. Evan LaHeur, I don't want to put words in his mouth or anything, but we spoke on, you know, the, the historic district here in town. It's the only historic district that we have, and there's potential to make Mashpee an attraction for tourism and things to bolster the town economy. Some of Evan's long-term plans were to, you know, rebuild the historic, um, Solomon Atacun, the Atacun Hotel, because of the unique architecture that was there. This area also lies within that historic district, and bringing people here for the purposes of educating them and sharing a bit about the culture and traditions of the Wampanoag people, it's the same thing that they're doing up at the Plymouth Plantation for, for years and generations, which our people were going up there and working for long periods of time, but then, you know, the program kind of deteriorated. This is an opportunity for, I think, the tribe to express itself, share a bit about its culture with all of Mashpee and tourists beyond. You know, I think it's ironic that the gentleman spoke of, you know, restricting access. I was wondering if that was going to come up tonight. And, you know, the tribe has long been victim to restricted access due to overdevelopment and things, with limited, limiting access to our Aboriginal hunting and fishing areas. Houses go up along paths and trails, gates going up. You know, the town, town has changed significantly since I was a child and, you know, remember going with my grandfather, driving down old dirt roads and things, learning how to drive. And, you know, but all these, all this time, we've been expected to just, you know, you, we have to deal with these things, you know, the town is changing. This is an opportunity, I think, to change that and provide the tribe with an opportunity to educate everyone and share in that experience. As Ms. Landry said, you know, it's not our way to put up gates and things, it's actually in contrast to our beliefs, and so, um, I just wanted to make mention of that. Thank you.
Thank you all. Did you wish to speak, sir? Last speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is John Weigl, Sturgis Lane, Mashpee. I just wanted to make a point to, to the, um, board members. I'm sensing a lot of buzz around the room about the issue about the beach, and I absolutely believe that the Wampanoag would make it accessible. I'm also completely in support of the village, I think it's a fabulous idea, and as a retired architect and designer, I can only imagine the incredible experience it would be. I would like to offer a thought to those involved, that it is possible, because the town controls the parcels and they're just lines on the ground, that if there's concern about control of the beach at Atacun Park, that can be separated out and maintained in town control, and then the balance of the property, including access to the lake, which I think is very important to the village and to the spiritual feelings of the Wampanoag, there could be a solution that serves both purposes adequately and will make everybody comfortable, but please, let's try and make the village happen. Thank you.
All right, I think we're ready to vote, and just to remind you, as with Article ten, if this article passes, it is to enable a discussion between the Select Board and the tribe with, with respect to the disposition of this property. This motion does require a two-thirds vote, so if everybody is ready, get your clickers and vote yes or no. The motion passes three ninety-three to seventy-nine. As you leave, please give your clicker to the folks at the door, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and good night.